I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And we will thank Erlene Bundy for our prelude music. Erlene, thank you very much.[37.11][37.11][applause] Tonight, we have Pastor Sandy Bence of Hope Lutheran Church. And here she comes. And that will be followed by Councilmember Chuck Washington with our flag salute. So if we would please stand, we'll have our invocation. And then, Councilmember Washington.
Good evening. Let us pray. Lord God, you are called by different names by many people. And yet, Lord, you are one God, a God who loves all people. Thank you for loving us, for giving us this day, and entrusting the city and its resources to us. We celebrate a community where people care about their neighbor, a community that continues to be shaped by the integrity and passion of dedicated citizens, protected by fine police and fire departments. We ask your blessing upon our city staff, our leaders, and our citizen volunteers as they serve this community. Continue, we pray, to protect us from wildfires and other disasters, as you comfort and help heal those in other areas, dealing with flooding and weather-related disasters. Guide this council tonight in the business before them. May they govern with wisdom and courage, seeking always to do what is right before doing what is easy. May their decisions always consider the voice of those who might otherwise not be heard. Amen.
Please remain standing. Before we meet with the city council the next time, we will be celebrating Independence Day. And if you, like I do, follow the news around the world, there are so many families, women, children, fathers, suffering under the tyranny of terrorists who want to take away their freedom. So as we renew our pledge, let's be mindful of the independence that we enjoy. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Washington. All right, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Camachero?
Here.
Councilmember Nagar?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts is absent. Councilmember Washington?
I am here.
And Mayor Edwards?
Here.
We have a presentation from Abbey Rinkie Elementary School. It's time for Odyssey of the Mind again? Again, come on up. And it says, "We have a presentation to the city of Temecula." We love that. You guys have been busy again?
Well, I've got a different group of kids this year.[236.01][236.01][laughing] Okay, good evening, Mayor Edwards, distinguished councilmembers. Thank you for taking the time to hear from our Odyssey team today. If you don't remember, I'm Ashley Foo. I am the Abbey Rinkie Elementary School PTA president, the Odyssey of the Mind chairperson, and most importantly, I'm a mom and a volunteer, which brings me here before you. Before I start talking Odyssey, though, I'd like to acknowledge a few people. So if you could please stand as I say your name. Ms. Christie Boyd, who is the principal of Abbey Rinkie Elementary School. She is one of our biggest cheerleaders, and without her support of the program and the PTA, we wouldn't be able to offer this program to our students. So I'd like to thank her. And then, I would also like to ask Tessa Nolan and Carrie Magrini to stand up. They are the team's coaches, who without their huge sacrifice and their personal time and patience, none of this would be possible. And I mean a lot of time and patience. So, thank you all for all that you do and how much you care about these kids. Now, for a quick refresher, Odyssey of the Mind is an internationally recognized program that teaches students to learn problem-solving skills emphasizing creativity, imagination, and thinking outside the box. It's an extracurricular activity that all of our young students dedicate a lot of time, energy, and effort into. And as you already know, their hard work and determination propelled them to compete at the world stage once again. Thanks to your commitment to the youth in Temecula Valley and your continued support of our school and this program, they traveled to the 35th Odyssey of the Mind World Finals Tournament at Iowa State University last month. There were over 833 teams from around the world who attended, and over 15,000 people were in attendance this year. And within their problem and division, there were 32 teams competing for the world title, and our kids took 11th place, which put them in the top 17 percent in the world.
Awesome.
These amazing little kids here.
Great.
They gave a fantastic performance. With a special honor, the actual founder of Odyssey of the Mind, Dr. Sam Mickles, came and watched their performance. He had met them on Tuesday when we arrived on campus, and they made such an impression on him that on Thursday morning, bright and early, he came out and watched them perform. And he thought they were just fantastic. They were the first team out for the entire competition, so a lot of pressure there, and they did amazing. And so, and in addition to that, they still maintain their title as the California State Champs because overall, they still outranked the three other California teams that came and competed in their division. They're a really young team. It's their first time on the competitive level, and we're so proud of them. They represented the school and the community with such pride and professionalism. They wore their Temecula medallions and shirts. If one of them wants to turn around, the city logo's on the back of it. So, they're walking around, talking about Temecula everywhere. The state of California had a service project where all the teams who came could bring postcards. And so, we brought Temecula postcards, had the kids' pictures put on them, which they went ahead and wrote little inspirational messages that were sent out to kids, terminal cancer patients.
Oh, that's nice.
And so, that was a service project that California did, and we did that, you know, with the Temecula postcards and everything. So now, I'd like to present to you the California State Champions and the 2014 World Finalists. First up, we have Lauren Foo. She is a third grader going into fourth grade. And then, we have Carly Nolan. She is also a third grader going into fourth grade. Then, we've got Emily Persky. We are losing her. She was a fifth grader. She's going into Temecula Middle School next year as a sixth grader.
TMS.
I know, TMS. And then, we've got Jada Magrini. She is also a third grader going into fourth grade. And then, last but not least, Tucker Shire, also a third grader going into fourth grade.[506.12][506.12][applause]
Good job, you guys.
And then, the team has an appreciation plaque that they would like to present to you.
Excellent.
It says, "Presented to the city of Temecula."
Let me come down there.
Yes, please.[522.91][522.91][laughing]
It's like Christmas. Yep, I love presents. All right.
Presented to the city of Temecula in recognition and appreciation for supporting and sponsoring our team, Abbey Rinkie Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind Not So Haunted House Team.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you so much. I'm gonna come around and shake every one of your hands. Thank you.[560.41][560.41][applause] And thank you. And thank you. I like your White Cheese House. You know, it's not the White House, it's the White Cheese House. I like your White Cheese House. Turn around, and you can show your t-shirts. It's the White Cheese House. You can turn around anyway, we'll pretend. Everybody imagine, we have a White Cheese House t-shirt on. So, okay, so, let me tell you, what did you like best? What'd you like best about going to Odyssey of the Mind?
I liked meeting everyone, but I just liked performing in front of the judges.
He likes performing in front of the judges. There's a future city council person right there.[597.41][597.41][laughing] And what did you like the best?
I liked doing spontaneous.
Another city council person right there.
I liked building the set.
Engineer, okay.
I liked acting, because then I learned that I really liked acting.
She liked acting. Okay, city council person right there.[618.12][618.12][laughing]
I like performing and thinking hard.
Okay, we have an entire city council standing right here in front of us. We have five people. Thank you very much.[627.88][627.88][applause] Thank you very much. And we have proud mom and volunteer.[631.12][631.12][applause] Thank you. This is the pride of Temecula, standing right here. So, thank you. You've made us very proud, and I really like the fact that you took Temecula postcards, and you performed a wonderful community service while you were there. So, you did a great thing. So, everybody give him a big round of applause.[651.12][651.12][applause] And thank you, moms and dads. I know you're not proud at all, right?[657.32][657.32][laughing] No. Thank you, thank you. We know it takes a lot of time to do things like this, but this is what makes wonderful citizens. So, we're really proud of you guys. Are you proud of yourselves? Well, good, you should be. Thank you, thank you. Give him a round of applause, council member.[672.12][672.12][applause] Do I have any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, while you're making your way back, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Congratulations, and thanks for sending Temecula team out there to the world, and performing, and making us very proud. And I have to share something with my colleagues, because the Foo family is full of all-stars. We knew about both of them, this year's contestant, last year's contestant, and Ashley's involvement at Abbey Rinkie. But my colleagues probably don't know that your husband, Jeffrey, who works over at DCH Auto, is working very hard to support our Temecula Rotary Club's Military Committee in securing a vehicle for a triple amputee wounded warrior. So, you guys are, you embody Temecula spirit. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. We love living here in Temecula.
Thank you.
One last thing, I would like to invite you all to attend a live performance. The team is going to be reprising their solution at Penny Pickles this Saturday, in conjunction with their 10th anniversary. So, they will be performing on Saturday between 12 and 1:00. They'll do one performance inside the museum, in the piano room, and then went outside in the builder's workshop. So, it's an honor. Thank you.
All right, 12 and 1:00.[761.12][761.12][applause] Thank you. Good job, you guys. Thank you.[765.12][765.12][applause] Wow, that's awesome. All righty, get back to it here. Okay, now, we are gonna move on to public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. All right, do we have any public comments?
We have nine public comments and nothing under consent.
All right. So, would you call the first speaker, please?
First speaker is Rebecca Weirston, to be followed by Lois No-Tarte.
Good evening, Rebecca. She brought her roses.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Weirston. I'm with the Temecula Valley Rose Society. And in looking at the seal behind you, it says, "Old traditions and new opportunities." Well, I will tell you, Saturday, June 21st exemplified that old traditions and new opportunities. In January, Gail Ziegler in the Parks and Recreation came to the Rose Society and said, "Do you think it would be possible for us to do a summer solstice event at Rose Haven Heritage Garden?" And we were delighted, because as you know, Rose Haven is a private garden owned by the Rose Society, but open to the public every day of the year, dawn to dusk. So, this gave a new opportunity to share the garden with the community from 7:00 in the evening till 10:00. And I will tell you that it was a magical evening. People began arriving at 7:00. There was still enough daylight that they walked around, looked at all the roses. We have a 3.4 acre garden that goes up the hillside, and the garden was just a swarm with people of all ages, all abilities to walk around the garden. And then, as dusk came, the luminaries that your staff had created throughout the garden came on, and it was really a magical experience. And everyone that came that evening really enjoyed it. Your staff and the volunteers with the city, it was seamless. They made it such a warm and wonderful event, the refreshments, the music, the luminaries, it was all just wonderful. And so, for the Rose Society, we're very happy to share the garden in this way. Our garden's usually a daytime activity, but this is very special. And I think that as long as there is a summer solstice and a Rose Haven, then we should continue this tradition. Thank you. And I did want these roses to go to Gail Ziegler, because she really made a magical evening for all of us.
We will make sure that Gail receives those roses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.[1008.88][1008.88][applause]
Madam Mayor, we do have a correction. There is one speaker under consent and eight under public comment.
Okay. Come on up.
Evening.
Louise, right?
Yes, I'm Louise No-Tarte. And I, along with my husband, were business owners in Temecula on Main Street. And I'm actually here tonight with a big acknowledgement, a big thank you, and it's coincidentally about Gail also.[1038.12][1038.12][laughing]
It's Gail night.
The council, the city, and Gail, the art festival, was incredible. It was an awesome event. It brought so many people to Main Street and to our businesses. The artists had fun. My family came from Orange County, and they patronized. They had dinner at Rosa's and bought stuff at Serendipity, and it was just really, really fun. And I thank you so much for putting on such a great event. It is a blast, and we really appreciate it, because it brought a lot of people to our businesses. So, thank you, that's all.
Well, you're welcome, and we will pass along the good word.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chai No-Tarte, to be followed by Roger Cayman.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Chai No-Tarte. I've been a photographer in the southwest Riverside County, including Temecula, for over 37 years. Currently, the owner of gallery on Main here in Temecula in Old Town. I've been a participant of the Temecula Art Festival for the past three years. We do a number of events and art shows throughout Southern California, and I want to let you know that the Temecula Art Festival is by far the best in all of Southern California. It's the best organized, it's the best variety of art, it's the best for us personally in sales. I, in particular, like to thank Gail Ziegler for her hard work, and I know she works long hours, because I see her emails response to me about 9:30, 10:00 at night. So, I also like to thank the city of Temecula for giving the artists a forum to display their artwork. And just, thank you.
Thank you.[1147.25][1147.25][applause] Gail's having a good night.
Roger Cayman, to be followed by Patrice Lines.
My name is Roger Cayman, with Orfit City Mobile Gym and Temecula Chamber Ambassador. And, you know, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, distinguished councilmen, for allowing me to share my excitement, as I share with you, that we are going to be breaking the Guinness Book of World Record on January 17th at the Storm Stadium for the largest circuit training ever held at a single location. So, as we bring business owners and fitness professionals in this valley together to bring fitness and awareness to our communities, to live healthy, rich lives, being healthy from the inside out, we are also partnering up with local charities to be able to raise money. And we believe that we're gonna raise a substantial amount of money through an opportunity to bring about 4,000 people to the Storm Stadium on January 17th. So, Mayor, I really appreciate our meeting the other day, and councilmen, I really, and councilwomen, I do appreciate what you do for this city. So many people just don't see sometimes everything that happens in this city, and, you know, it's so nice to be able to open up in prayer tonight and be able to keep our priorities where they need to be. And I think that's the reason why our city is so amazing to be in. I'm glad I have my business here, and I'm glad I have an opportunity to talk to you tonight and be able to share this great event that'll happen in January. And as we lead up to it, I thank you in advance for your support. Thank you.[1251.04][1251.04][applause]
Thank you, sir.[1253.25][1253.25][coughs]
Patrice Lines, to be followed by Carol Field.
Nice to see you. Citizens, this Monday, we were scheduled to get a flight of hundreds of illegal aliens from the Texas border. They were to be processed at the Murrieta Border Patrol Station and released in Lake Elsinore. Fortunately, Sunday night at the last minute, this was canceled, but this could happen again at any time. Everyone needs to know the infectious deadly diseases documented by the CDC and the WHO, diseases that are now at the border and that are, we're seeing. We're seeing leprosy. Leprosy, yes. Drug-resistant TB, a highly contagious disease transmitted by cough or sneeze, scabies, lice, shaga's disease. You may not know what that is. That is a tropical disease. Dengue fever, and other tropical diseases. All childhood diseases are being seen. Chickenpox, measles, mumps, whooping cough. When illegals are brought into the U.S. without screening or quarantine before release, you will be exposed. You will be exposed at the grocery store, at the school. You will have a disaster waiting to happen. We, our communities must have the political will to object to these policies and take action, and have the illegal aliens repatriated to their home countries. Call your congressman, every member of the city council of your city, whatever city you're in, all the state senators and your California senator. This is quite serious, so I recommend you call the president, Eric Holder, as Eric Holder is the final arbiter of who gets deported. Our health and national security and safety is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Field, to be followed by Doug Bailey.
Hi, my name's Carol Field, and I'm here because it was brought to my attention that approximately 700 illegal aliens were being transferred from the border states into the Murrieta Border Patrol Station. And I, like many of us, have been watching what's going on at the borders, and we're having just an invasion, literally. And I know that the federal government is supposed to protect the states, and that's not happening. And that the federal government is going around the law, and they are forcing things onto the states and into our communities that we don't want. And if people just sit at home and get upset and yell at the television and do nothing, things aren't gonna change. And that's why I'm here today, by voicing my concern. This is not good for our community, it's not good for our state or country, it's not even good for the people that they're bringing in. These kids are being taken away from their families and all they know, and I just, I think it's a really bad situation, and I'm here to voice my opinion on that and ask for other citizens to stand with me and get involved. Thank you.[1510.12][1510.12][applause]
Doug Bailey, and our final speaker under public comment is Wayne Hall.
Mr. Bailey, good evening.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Thank you for having me here and allowing me to speak. I am here again in Gail Ziegler's praise. She is a fantastic person, an asset to your city, and I hope you all know that and continue with her employment, which I don't think there's any doubt of.[1546.62][1546.62][laughing] I also am here as a representative of the Inland Empire Photography Club. And I was approached by Gail a couple months ago with an opportunity to display our photos at this art festival that occurred last weekend. And I will say that the club, just a little history on our club, we're only a couple years old, but already, we've grown to maybe 160 members, and enthusiastic people, great people. And when they heard that we had a chance to display at this art festival, they were jumping up and down, literally. You could've seen the excitement bounce off the walls of our last couple meetings. We held a club-wide contest to see who got to display, because unfortunately, the city area here is rather small. We only had 25 ESOS, so, I'm kidding about the small part. This is a beautiful facility. And, but we were able to sit up in the hallway outside here, and we had a very successful show. And the top 25 people came down, represented themselves, loved the festival, and loved participating, talking to the merchants, going in and buying things. I know I spent a couple hundred dollars that day, because my wife was with me.
Good, we loved that.
Yeah, we couldn't say no. I can't say no, anyway. And so, I would just like to, again, just thank you and express our appreciation for this wonderful event. I moved to Temecula in 2000. We had come here a lot of times before, looking for antiques. It was always a nice sleepy little old town. When I got here in 2000, it was still this nice sleepy little old town, and somebody has done wonders down here. I love the energy, I love the enthusiasm, I love the direction Old Town has taken. Thank you for that. And that would conclude my remarks, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and we'll tell Gail.
Yes, please do.[1665.25][1665.25][applause]
It's Wayne Hall.
Actually, it's true, because when I was a child here, I used to sleep on the hill watching the wind blow through the fields and the grass, or on the dancing trees. I have a different item I wanna cover tonight. I read the newspaper this morning from our local newspaper. Anyway, it was talking about the flood control deal, and then the floods we had back in 1992. And for those who were here at the time, it was epic. Not necessarily a lot of damage done, but this is our little town. You know, it was to our heart. Anyway, I read the article, a couple other articles in there too, and usually, I just throw it in the cat box and walk away. But my point I wanna bring up is, the mayor had made mention about Barbara Boxer and Feinstein, and our illustrious members of Congress in this senate, who've been there for maybe 10, 20, 30 years. And now, if people think that what's going on in Sacramento and Washington is great, you know, they're right on, you vote for the same people. Keep sending them back. They'll get richer, and they'll get more affluent. If you wanna change, you cannot ask people to change. You have to vote somebody else in. It's time that we look at, I'm asking this of all the citizens of Temecula, when it comes to this election, look at these people, and if you're happy with them, then you vote for them. But if you think that we can do a lot better with all the problems that are now happening here in Temecula because of the federal government, I would suggest you vote for somebody different this time, not the same old crowd. Other than that, that's enough horn blowing for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.[1793.12][1793.12][applause] Well, it's time for city council reports, and I'm going to... Well, it's time for city council reports, and I'm going to, I'm going to jump in, because we had some comments about the, everything that's in the news about the immigration issues, and I just want to reassure everyone that I, we have been in touch with Congressman Calvert's office and Duncan Hunter's office, and we have been kept up to date on the most recent reports. And as far as we know, the most recent word coming out of their office is that all the plans to send anyone to Southern California as of today have been shelved, and they're keeping everyone in Texas for now and Arizona, which seems to make the most sense. I can't imagine that, that flying anyone out of the state and sending them to California would have been cost-effective. It seems to make more sense to keep them where they are and just move assets to that area. So for now, there are no plans to send anyone to Southern California, number one, and even makes more sense to not send anyone all the way to the Murrieta Border Patrol Office, where there are no resources to process anyone. So for now, that is the plan, and we are monitoring constantly and daily. We're in touch with Murrieta city leaders. I had conversations with Mayor Long a couple of times today. We've traded emails and exchanged voicemails. So I just want everyone to know that we are on top of the situation, and we are first in the line of priority for being contacted by our congresspeople if anything changes. So we're monitoring the situation constantly, so let that, you know, hope that reassures you. So it has been a very fluid situation and very frustrating for us, and I will say it's frustrating for the congresspeople, too. So hopefully, they're going to get angry and do something about it. So that's all I have to say on that issue. Okay, and Mayor Potemcomchero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly echo those, those statements. To, to say that we weren't a little bit nervous would be a lie. It was nerve-wracking, and we have come through it, and it took input from an awful lot of people who expressed their displeasure, from our city, from Murrieta, and a lot of citizens. So thank you for those who engaged, because it worked. I have just a couple of things. Reference was made to the art festival over the weekend, particularly the street painting festival, and I say particularly because I had the pleasure of being involved in that. I see Melody out there asked me to, to be a judge for that contest on Sunday afternoon, and it was a blast, I tell you. But the, if you haven't been out there to see some of the street painting, it's chalk on the sidewalk. Some of those paintings are just absolutely incredible, the detail, the color, the level of talent that's demonstrated in some of those. It was very, very difficult for me to go around with a sheet of paper and a pen and try to pick out the ones that I thought were best, because I thought so many of them were just terrific. So well done by everybody. Also, a comment, Mr. City Manager. I had occasion to take the road through the creek the other day from Diaz to Via Montezuma, the low-flow crossing, and I noticed that the weeds on both sides were just about eye-high, although I didn't get out of the car to check. But I remember we've had years in the past where the weeds have overrun the creek, and we had to worry about flood season, rainy season. There's a prediction I heard concerning the possible El Nino next, next winter, so it's not the time later to do something about it, it's the time now, and I realize that sometimes that entails permits from the resource agencies, and it's more complicated than just going in there and cutting them down, but I think we need to start that process now, so I appreciate that. That's all I have.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, so if that is the case, going, going, gone. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. All right, item number one, standard ordinance resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, resolution adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements submitted to the voters at an election to be held Tuesday, November 4th. Number five, approval of fiscal year 2014-15 trustee fees related to the city's outstanding bonds. Number six, insurance policies, workers' compensation, property, automobile, fiscal damage, earthquake, and flood crime liability, renewal, extension, and alignment. Number seven, authorization of application to the Director of Industrial Relations, State of California, for a certificate of consent to self-insure workers' compensation liabilities. Number eight, support of AB 2610 Williams, an act to amend section 89708 of the Education Code relating to California State University Special Sessions at the request of Council Member Washington. Number nine, Second Amendment to the Agreement with Proactive Fire Design, Inc., for Fire Department Plan Review Service. Number 10, Second Amendment to the Maintenance Agreement with Innovative Document Solutions for Canon Copiers Printers. Number 11, First Amendment to the Agreement with Blanca Y. Price for Landscape Plan Check and Inspection Services for Fiscal Year 2013-14. Number 12, Agreement with Kaiser Marsh &amp; Associates for Economic Consulting Services, Land Use Economic Opportunities Study, and Old Town Market Opportunities Update. Number 13, First Amendment to the Agreement with K.R.W. &amp; Associates for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Number 14, First Amendment to the Contract with Pacific Striping, Inc., for Citywide Repainting of Traffic Striping, PW 13-04. Number 15, Second Amendment to the Agreement with Temecula Sunrise Rotary Foundation for Fiscal Year 2014-15. And, all right, and I know we have a, I know we have someone that's going to speak, so we'll go ahead and take motion and a second.
Was that item eight that we had to speak on?
Was it the speaker?
The request to speak is for items six and seven.
Item six, okay.
Six and seven.
All right, six and seven.
Well, then I'll move the balance.
So we'll move six and seven, I mean, we'll move the balance.
Second, consent calendar without six and seven.
Okay, so the motion and a second, holding aside six and seven, and cast your votes.
Come on, Ron.
And we've got four with Mr. Roberts absent. All right, and then, does anyone want to pull either of those items? No?
I think we need to pull them.
No? No? Okay, so then we can go ahead and take the speaker, please.
Charlotte Stefen?
Good evening. Good evening, how are you? Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Charlotte Stefen, and I am here as a citizen of the city of Temecula, as well as a business owner here in the city of Temecula. I'd also like to fully disclose that Jeff Camachero is my neighbor.
Never saw you before.
And I had the pleasure of waiting in line with him 26 years ago, Pat next to me, both of us very pregnant, and both of our children are now 25 years old, so, are almost 25 years old. So I just want to make sure that everyone is clear with that.
No conflicts.
No conflict.
No conflict whatsoever, and Jeff and I have not had any discussion about this whatsoever, seriously. First of all, I'd like to discuss items six and seven, and both of them kind of go hand in hand. This is why I'm addressing both of them. I'm a component. My name is Charlotte Stefen, and I'm here on behalf of my business partner, Laura Demiro. She's here, and we own Acme Administrators. We're a third-party workers' compensation claims administrator. We've been in business here in Temecula for 10 years. We're on the corner of Third and Old Town Front Street, above the Old Town Pub and Grub. I want to make it clear that we are not objecting to the city becoming self-insured. What my concern is, is the application that is being submitted for the, to consent to self-insure. We have been doing this for over 30 years, and I have been in here trying, as a business owner, trying to be one of the businesses that has the opportunity to potentially bid on the business, okay? So because I read the city council minutes every time I get my notice, I happened to notice this Monday and see that it was coming through and the, and the application was there, and I'm thinking, hmm, that's interesting. I don't, you know, usually I'm trying to on top of these things. Brown &amp; Brown has submitted an insurance proposal for the city to become, for excess workers' compensation with a New York Marine. As part of that process, they attach an application of consent to self-insure. This is very standard operating procedures. However, my concern is that on page 67 of the application, it specifically states they're proposing Carl Warren &amp; Company, which is one of my competitors, and not saying that I, you know, I compete with them all the time. I just want a level playing field. If this application goes through, it's just going to be signed off. Usually, workers' compensation claims administration services are professional services and usually get an opportunity to compete, just as the insurance policies were competed against with Safety National, with New York. There's several quotes in here with Brown &amp; Brown. There are no quotes address whatever with respect to the workers' compensation claims administration. I would love to have this contract, but I'm sure so would, so would all of my competitors. What I wanted to address is, number one, what was the selection criteria for recommending Carl Warren? And as an owner, is I would like the opportunity to bid on this business and/or at least be heard about the opportunity to bid against Carl Warren, and probably other ones would too. We're owners. We specialize in workers' compensation, have been for over 30 years as a business in town for 10 years, and Carl Warren has only been a business on workers' comp for three years, okay? And I was able, my business partner and I were able to bring in the contract with the city of Los Angeles and convince them that, to put their contract in the city of Temecula. As of May 1st last year, I brought a $3.4 million contract in and hired employees right over here on the corner, and I want to be able to do that with the city of Temecula. You have, you're going to, Carl Warren will be putting this in San Diego. Their offices are in Orange County, as well as in San Bernardino. We are fully prepared to bring on this contract as of 7/1. Shop Temecula first, keep the local business in town. We are a local business. We're a minority business, and we are woman-business-owned. Laura has been, she's involved with a church here locally, her and her husband, Chris Demiro. My husband, Curtis Stefen, who's here, who also knows Jeff and Pat, who's also in the risk management industry as well. I've been a resident since 99, I mean, excuse me, 89. Laura, since 1999. And so whatever the selection criteria was for Carl Warren, I'd at least want the opportunity as a business owner and a citizen to be able to hopefully compete, you know, on the, on the level playing field with him. So that's basically what I have to say.
All right, and do you want to go ahead? I guess we're on item number six now, so we could have you address item number seven at the same time, but
It's basically
We've got to address this one first.
Okay, number six is the actual proposal with the application attached to it, and number seven is the actual application itself requesting to be submitted. So it's almost like a duplicate, so that's why I'm addressing both, because they're basically the same thing. So what it is, is that my question, I guess, or my concern, is that this is going to be, the, the application has to be submitted. It hasn't been approved yet. Somebody has to sign off it on the state here with the city council, and then it'll be submitted to the state of California for approval, is what will happen. So you don't have your consent yet. Your consent has to be approved by the Department of Self-Insurance, is what it has to be. And, and on page 67 of that application, which is part of the Brown &amp; Brown proposal, on 67, it says proposed claims administrator. It doesn't necessarily say it has to be that administrator, but more than likely, if this is signed off on it, it won't go through the usual, or what I should say, standard procedure of allowing other, you know, competitor, I should say, other administrators the opportunity to at least negotiate or bid on the business. I don't know how they were selected. I have no idea. I have literally been in and out of this office, talking in the past to different people about an opportunity, and in the past, the city has taken the position that they're going to be dollar-one insured for the longest time, and then I see this on the consent calendar, and I'm thinking, wow, somebody, you know, believe me, I'm a total, total proponent of self-insurance. I think it's the thing to do, but I just want to be the administrator that's actually doing the claims administration.
Okay, so, so we have your comment, so then if you can, then go ahead, and you can take your seat, and then we'll go ahead and deal with item number six. So thank you. All right, so we have the public comment on item number six, so I can put it back to staff. Mr. City Manager, would you like to address?
Yeah, I would like to invite Robert Cardenas, our Fiscal Services Manager. With respect to item six, I think the genesis behind that particular agenda item was, our motive was to align our policies to the fiscal year, which is essentially, we had them expiring at different times during the year. So Robert, why don't you weigh in on, on item six, first off, in terms of the timing of that and the process?
Sure. What we're doing, good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Robert Cardenas. I'm the Fiscal Services Manager for the city. With regards to aligning the insurance policies, item number six, and that's basically what it does, taking a look at the various dates that they were expiring for budgetary projection purposes and the like, it was decided that we aligned them to the fiscal year rather than at separate times during the year. And that's your item number six. A component of that is the workman's comp liability, which is also, we're moving from a first-dollar loss policy to a self-insurance policy, and that's scheduled to take effect July 1st as well, if this is approved. With regards to number seven, absolutely correct, we did hire a third-party administrator, Carl Warren &amp; Associates. We, the rationale behind that was because, looking at our public contract, not necessarily our public contract code, but our municipal code, because it's under $30,000 and it is a professional service, you don't have to put it out to competitive bid. The dollar amount on that service, because our workman's comp claims are so low, we're looking at $7,500. We currently use Carl Warren &amp; Associates for our liability side, where we also have a self-insured retention. We've had them for a number of years. So the decision was because the dollar amount was so low that we continued to use them on the workman's comp side until we got this service in place. Again, it is $7,500, but it's one of those things where it may be $7,500 or maybe zero, because depending on the number of workman's comp claims we get on any given year. That is my report. I can answer any questions.
Questions? Chuck, you're in the queue.
I'm not, but I have a question. Okay.
And I pressed that a while ago, so
Are you good?
Yeah, I'll wait till the, I'll wait till the discussion takes place.
I understand if we estimate that the exposure, the cost, would be no more than $7,500 and possibly less, what would you estimate? You may not be able to answer this, or maybe Jennifer, you can answer it. Normally, when we go out for a bid process,
Yes.
What does that cost us? So what's the trade-off? What are we saving by not going out to a bid process and against that potential of $7,500 that we're paying?
When you go out to bid, depending on the nature of the bid, in this situation, it would require a request for proposal, which requires us to place it, the administrative burden would be to put it out to bid, draft the RFP, solicit the bid, evaluate the bids, which are putting together panels, job knowledge experts from the city, and also two experts outside of the city. So you would have that panel as well, and then after evaluating the bids, you would then select a bidder or award it to a winner. In this situation, it wouldn't necessarily need to go to council, so there wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a cost. So the administrative process probably about, and I'm just guessing, thinking out loud, is probably about $600, $700, outside of staff time and that type of thing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Nobody else?
Robert, I remember sitting in on a meeting, I think with Councilmember Nigar, where you made a presentation
Correct.
Regarding this move to self-insure. Was that a subcommittee meeting of the Finance Committee, or was that just briefing two council members at a time? It was a finance
It was a finance committee.
I believe this was, this was also publicly noticed, finance subcommittee meeting.
Okay, so there was notice given in the usual fashion, 72 hours before that subcommittee meeting
That's correct.
That anyone from the public could attend.
Correct.
Okay, how long ago was that?
That was on May 13th, 2014.
Okay, I thought it had been some time ago. Mike, do you remember that? Do you recall what the discussion?
I think it was longer ago, but I do recall what the discussion was. What we did was we analyzed the, the cost-benefit of going self-insuring versus the risk of what could happen, and we felt that even if we, for, it was something like this, it was
We were spending somewhere like in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars for coverage
You got it.
And we were only having about $80,000 in claims on average for the last 10 years.
So if we went one year and, and had, and it stayed status quo, we were, it was a break-even. Anything more than that, and we started to get ahead of the game. I think it was something of that nature.
Right. So Right. So, the speaker's contention wasn't that that wasn't a good idea.
Right.
She kind of agrees with staff's recommendation that we look at self-insuring. I think her concern is, is that she should have, and others in the community should have been given an opportunity to bid for that.
Correct.
But in this case, are you saying that had that happened, and someone else was awarded that contract, it's only about a, what, $7,500 a year?
Potentially, $7,500, yes.
Okay, because the company that you were proposing be given that contract, they are already providing the city with liability coverage.
Correct.
And so that was staff's impetus for just moving over to a company we were already doing business with?
Correct, under a different scope of work. One's the liability side, this would be the workman's comp.
And the other's worker's comp.
Side.
We have a very safe city staff.
Yes.
And not to be disparaging to our public safety folks, because they are in harm's way on a day-to-day basis, but them being under contract removes a lot of, I'm guessing, a lot of the potential for workers' comp. I mean, is that a safe statement, or is that not the case?
Well, as far as the third-party administrators.
Well, no, I just mean, what workers do we have that are exposed to the potential being injured more likely?
Right. Well, fortunately, as a city, we do contract out for a lot of services, including street ma, excuse me, tree maintenance and the like. Contract out for police, we contract out for fire.
Okay.
The biggest exposure comes, we have about 11 staff members on the public works maintenance side who deal with street lights and also with street maintenance. That's where the majority of your workman's comp claims will land.
Okay.
Outside of that, we have a lot of office staff, and then we have lifeguards and that, and the like, but on average, we get about 7.5 claims, workman's comp claims, per year, and that's why moving to a self-insured retention was the right thing to do, given our low claims, and it'll save the city about $222,000 a year.
Okay, so I don't think there's any dispute about whether it makes sense to move to self-insured. It's, I guess, just.
Correct.
Jeff?
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I think we all agree with that. So that's not the issue here. I'm a little bit disturbed, and I support, I'm going to support the item, and I am, because I think it was probably a wise decision to avoid the costs and the expense and staff time of going forward with an outside recruitment for that amount, especially when there was a qualified concern already in-house. But it does bring up an interesting point, and it's not just with you and your work necessarily, but with the recruitments in general and proposals in general. When we have interested parties who are coming in and meeting with our staff, and we know that they have interest in doing business with the city, we should be sensitive to that, and we should keep that record on file. And when we go out and contemplate this, I'm using this because it's in front of us, but when we contemplate going through a process like this, as a courtesy to those, especially our own citizens, we should go out to them and say, hey, this is what we're doing. We're going to be taking this action at the council meeting or whatever, and we're interested in your input. It may not be a formal bid process, because the size of the contract is too low to justify that, but nevertheless, again, as a courtesy to those who are interested enough to come in and talk and seek that business. I think they should be notified of what the action's going to be, and be given a chance to weigh in on it.
That should almost be really kind of the way we just always do business.
Be standard, yeah.
As a default, giving our local businesses.
Courtesy.
The default, you know, to at least let them have a look at it.
Okay.
In staff's defense also, though, as Aaron pointed out, it was a noticed meeting, but I agree with Jeff.
Yeah, and you know, we, I don't want to accuse us, ourselves, sitting up here, but frankly, we sometimes hide behind the fact that, well, it was a noticed meeting. That's the extent that we have to go to, but it's not necessarily the extent that we could go to.
Right.
To be more sensitive, so that's all I'm saying.
All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you, Robert, and I will accept a motion, and I would think we can take items six and seven. And I hear the crickets, so it must be time.
The first vote will be for item six.
Okay.
She was asking.
Yes, first one will be for item six.
Can you see it? Is it showing up on your screen?
She's waiting on a motion.
Yeah, I'm waiting for a motion. I'm waiting for someone to make one. Well, we can just wait, if you want. I need a motion for item six. There go the crickets again. Somebody wants to move item six?
My phone makes that noise when I get a text message.
Item six going twice.
A motion? What's behind that?
Well, if no one wants to make a motion.
I made the motion. You're making a motion? Yeah. That's a first.
This is a little joke. I think they're just playing a little joke on me tonight. It's okay.
Well, if you push, if you push your button, I'll push my button.
Okay, that's a deal. I'm going to push both of your buttons here in a minute.
All right, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Item six, very funny. Cast your votes, and it is four, with Mr. Roberts absent. Okay, now we need a motion and a second on item seven, and don't make me pull this dais over. There's one, and they're off and running. Do I have a second on item seven? Number seven, seven, do I have number seven?
I made the motion, Chuck, to see.
Number seven, I need it.
You're good.
All right, cast your votes.
We're just waiting on the mayor.
I voted, and there it is, four, with Mr. Roberts absent. Okay, we are through with consent, and we're going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting, moving on to Temecula Community Services, Successor Agency, Redevelopment Agency, Temecula Housing Authority, and the Public Financing Authority, and take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Roberts is absent. Director Washington?
Here.
And President Calmaturo?
Here. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. We'll skip that portion of the meeting then, and we'll go to the consent calendar. Item 16, approval of the action minutes of June 10th, 2014. 17, agreement with Melody's AdWorks, Inc., for Old Town Temecula Special Event Coordination.
There's another one.
And Market Services. And item 18, annual agreement with Nicholas Tirsch for graphic design and videographic videography services for the theater and museums for fiscal year 2014-2015. I will accept the motion for Mr. Nigar, early though it was.
It's done.
And we have a second for Mr. Washington. Please cast your votes.
And that's done.
And that motion does carry unanimously with Mr. Roberts absent. Do we have a report, Mr. Hawkins? I know we do, with the Fourth of July coming up. Dazzle us.
Oh, no pressure. Yes, we do. You know, on the heels of a great street art festival this past weekend, which we heard a lot about, and as well as the culmination of another successful theater season, and also the ongoing activities celebrating the 10th anniversary of Penny Pickles Workshop, you know, please join us this Saturday, June 28th, at 7:30 PM, actually for another event spearheaded by Gail Ziegler, here on the steps of beautiful Civic Center. It's called Pops Under the Stars. This is a free event presented by the Inland Valley Symphony. The Pops Under the Stars Symphony will be conducted by acclaimed composer, orchestrator, and conductor for them television and musical theater, Nolan Livesay, featuring many of Broadway's musical hits and movie music. Bring a blanket and a chair, and enjoy a wonderful evening of Pops Under the Stars. And also, just a friendly reminder that Temecula is indeed the place to be to celebrate our nation's Independence Day. We have our Star Spangled Parade at 10 o'clock AM in Old Town with close to 70 entries. After a little break, head on over to Ronald Reagan Sports Park at 2:00 PM for an afternoon and evening of live music, vendors, family fun, and an amazing fireworks show in a safe and wonderful setting. So come on out, enjoy yourselves, and help us celebrate the Fourth of July. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin.
Going to be a lot of fun.
Mr. Adams, a general manager's report.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, by the way. Mr. Adams is getting ready to go to Hawaii on a well-deserved vacation, so.
Thank you.
No wonder you don't have a comment. You want to get out of here?
That's right.
No, I'm teasing. Have a good trip.
Thank you.
Any board member comments before I accept the motion to adjourn, a little bit out of order?
Independently making a second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, seeing no objection. We're adjourned.
And I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. On to City Council Business, number 19, ordinance amending Section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets. And can we have a, just a brief staff report? Just the quickest staff report.
Brief it is, Honorable Mayor and council members. In August 2006, council adopted ordinance 609, which established the speed limits on certain streets within the City of Temecula. The recommended speeds were based on an engineering and traffic survey as prescribed in the California Vehicle Code. The CVC requires local authorities to reaffirm the speed limits every seven years with a new traffic survey, or extend the existing traffic survey to 10 years if a determination is made that no significant changes have been made in roadway or traffic conditions. This renewal will provide authority for the police to continue enforcement of existing speed limits on the listed roads. Staff recommendation is to adopt the ordinance amending Section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets.
Thank you, sir. I'm assuming, I didn't ask for public comments, but I didn't think we had any.
There are no public comments.
All right, any questions of staff?
Move adjournment?
Not quite.
That's a Freudian slip.
Not quite. No comments, and no comments?
I will second the item.
Okay, I'm assuming we have a motion to approve and a second, and so cast your votes, and thank you.
Okay, all right.
Just for the record, Mr. Garcia read the title, so that counts.
All right, and it's four with Councilmember Roberts absent. Okay, any reports, Mr. City Manager?
I have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation for Councilman Nigar.
You can do that when you get back from vacation. Have a lovely time, Mr. City Attorney.
You'll be getting calls in Hawaii, is what you'll be getting.
Peter, anything?
We had a closed session, but there are no items to report under the Brown Act from that closed session.
All right, then, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Independence Day, everybody.
And happy Independence Day, everybody, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.